Okay, we're commending the order at this time.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Mrs. Higgins-Bobham.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
The meeting agenda provided for your review. If there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend that the agenda be approved as presented.
I'm making motion to approve adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Okay, next item is public comments.
Mr. Kazook, I do want to thank the Kentucky Federation of Professional Businesswomen's Club, specifically the Russell County Chapter. I'll just read the plaque that they presented to us back, I think it was last month in October. The 2023 Business Promoting Women Award presented to the Russell County Board of Education by the Russell County Business and Professional Women's Club in recognition of their commitment to the continued community and promoting women to the workforce. So we appreciate that recognition and proud to display that at the Board of Education. I wanted to give a shout out to them. Appreciate Barbara Sharp and her leadership and work with that.
Any other public comments?
I got a message on Messenger last night concerning a guy's kid. He said about three days a week, he'll call him, his son ain't at school. And he said he'll call him back and he'll say, yeah, he's here. But he says the thing of it is, if he don't call him back and find out where he's at, he'll have him in the court system over not being in school. I got one on this probably four, five months ago too, same person. And I never paid much attention to it, but I had a new one on there today. I meant to bring it with me and I forgot it.
Well, if you can get me that contact, I'll be happy to look into that and call him. And I know Mrs. Danridge is here. Sometimes what happens, Mr. Murray, if a child is late.
Right.
When they come in late and then they're in the system is late, and until the secretary reconciles that, if they don't do it in time, then the automated system calls and lets them know. So it could just be, it could just be that.
Something like that.
Yeah. But if you have the contact and stuff, I'll be happy to reach out to it.
Yeah, I got you.
Anything else? The next item on the agenda is Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition, like Richard, Russell County High School.
Dwight Richards, is he? Tagpole! Oh!
I have practiced all day trying to say Mr. Richards. So I may say Mr. Tagpole, and that way you all know who I'm talking about. But Rhonda had to work tonight. She asked me to make this presentation. And so many, many decades ago, when Gerald Murray was a young man and Dwight and I were teenagers, I worked with his stepmother in the park, and of course, his dad was at the State Dog. So I've always known him. You remember those years? Yeah. He used to bring you a drink every lunch, every lunch. Not that kind of drink, but. Fast forward a little bit. Dwight and Jimmy were in JC's together. We've worked together on many JC projects. So I was very glad to make this presentation. So Dwight has taught 22 years. Lincoln County ATC, which was a long drive, and he made that drive for a long time. Derrick County Middle School, he was assistant principal, Southern Middle School. He was assistant principal. That was in Plasky County. Casey County Middle School. And now he's here at Russell County, and he has ASP and work-based learning, which is co-op. He's over several students for co-op, which is not an easy task because it's like her cats when they're all out working somewhere. Not sure if they're working or not, but you know, you do the best you can. He attended Somerset Community College and then at EKU, and you're going to have to help me with all these certificates you got.
Well, I did an associate's at Somerset, and then I did an associate's at EKU, and then I did my bachelor's at EKU. Then I did my master's, EKU, in technical education. And then I did my master's in education administration. So I had two masters from there. And at that time, I was like, well, I'd keep going. So I did my DPB certificate, my instructional supervisor certificate, and also my superintendent's certificate.
So when we asked him what he liked best about teaching, he said helping students prepare for their future and watching them grow into the future leaders of our community. And I'm going to go back to the JC's because he's an older JC now. And so he is culturing those community leaders. He is one of those people that was always there doing jobs that maybe not everybody wanted to do, but had to be done. And so now he is helping with that as that goes along. He likes to hunt. He was showing everybody his deer. Fish camp boat, has spent time with his family, and his favorite quote, "Don't be mean to anyone because you never know who your boss is going to be someday." Do you want to say something?
Speech.
He was teasing me about that a little bit. Very pleased to be recognized. I'm awful happy to be at home, working. Just drive a long time. Everyone wants to be home. It's awful nice to drive three miles up the road instead of 33 miles up the road. How far were we in Lincoln County?
About 50, 58 miles?
53 or something like that.
Yeah, 54.
Makes a big difference. And that way I can spend more time with the family, friends, and the things that are important. And yeah, my main thing with teaching, I just love working with kids and trying to help them prepare themselves. The world's harsh out there these days. And if they're not ready for it, they're going to be in for a rude awakening, at least that's how I feel.
Take the picture.
Gives you more time to fix those pretty torches too.
Yeah. Now listen, he is not, he is not getting any credit for that because he does not do that. That is Vicki that does it.
That is a lot. That is not all on. I'll send that to all of you.
Next item is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, bill trips, and the treasurer's monthly report. Ms. Carnes will present. As you all recall, we didn't have the September, so she'll have the September and October financial report tonight.
I know. I double check. I see five hundred and seventy numbers when they're out. All right. So this is the month of September 2023. Our balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $17,595,167.11. Total receipts for the month were $1,779,976.26. And that brought our total of receipts and beginning balance to $19,375,143.37. Disbursements for the month were $4,803,554.96. And our balance at the close of the month was $14,578.41. Fund balances in the general fund, Fund One, $6,770,408.18. And special projects, Fund Two, negative $613,210.80. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, negative $44,410.29. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $131,750 even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $284,350.78. Construction Fund, Fund Three Sixty, $7,324,651.18. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, zero dollars. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, $714,421.66. And the fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,627.70. And that brought our total of all funds to $14,571,588.41.
And the two negatives are what?
Fund Two, there, of course, we have to spend it and then get reimbursed for it. And we did just get, I think it came in, well, I know it came in the early part of November because I just coded it maybe last week. We got, I want to say a little over a million in Fund Two because it gets more negative here in October, but we did just get a large reimbursement. And moving on to October, for the month of October 2023, the balance on hand beginning month was $14,571,588.41. The total receipts for the month were $1,704,958.90. Total receipts and beginning balance together, $16,276,547.31. And disbursements for the month were $6,5842.1. And that brought our balance at the close of the month to $10,270,705.30. And the fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $6,324,397.24. Special projects, Fund Two, negative $1,336,93.30. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, negative $54,639.96. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $131,750 even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $48,498.76. Construction Fund, Three Sixty, $4,706,896.69. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, zero dollars. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, $446,768.17. Fiduciary Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,127.70. And that brought our total cash for all funds to $10,270,705.30.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. There are no changes or amendments. I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item is fiscal year 2023 audit report.
So I know Mr. Joe Montgomery is with us today. Montgomery Company PPLC completed their fiscal year 23 audit report. And I know you all have had those distributed to you last week. Mr. Montgomery will be here to hit the highlights for our audit report. Every page, yes. Yes, please do that.
Kentucky's players, so don't make it long.
I'm sorry?
Kentucky's players, you don't make it long.
Here's your audit report. Any questions, email me. I'm just going to hit the highlights. The first, if you go to page two, pages two through three, that's the independent auditors report of your financial statements. It's what we call an unmodified opinion, meaning it's a clean opinion on your financial statements. Pages four through 10, that is management's discussion and analysis prepared by Margaret Carnes. And we did check this and credit it to the underlying data and numbers to assure it's actually, it's a good summary. If you want to read this entire 90 pages, you can read this and get a pretty good idea of what went on. During the commercials. Page number 11, that's statement of net position for the year ended June 30 of 2023. You had total current assets of $20,946,000. That was up 11.6 million dollars. Of that, your cash was up 14.7 million over the previous year. The reason your cash was up by that much was you had $10 million in construction fund money that came in from a bond that you issued. Total assets, $82,460,000, up 13.6 million. And your total assets and deferred outflows, $91,640,000. That's 17.5 million dollars higher than the previous year. Your total current liabilities, $4,349,000. That's a $959,000 increase. Total liability, $62,294,000. That's up 14.2 million. The reason that's up is because you did issue a $12.4 million bond in the current fiscal year. Overall, total liabilities, deferred inflows, $73,740,000. And your net position was $17,989,000, $2.4 million increase from the previous year. The next page is statement of activities for the entire year. Total expenses was $43,998,000. That's a $4.4 million increase over the prior year. Your revenue was $47.4 million. That's a $3.9 million increase over the previous year. And your change in net position, what I would call your profit, for the year was $3,413,000. That's a slight decrease from the previous year by about $490,000, but not anything I'm concerned about. You have a nice solid three-plus million dollar increase in your net position. So good financials. Page number 13, this is your governmental funds, balance sheet at the end of the year. You had total assets of $19,991,000, up 8.6 million from the previous year. Total liabilities, $1,576,000, down 2.3 million. And total fund balance, $18,415,000. That's up 10.9 million. But 9.6 million of that is in the construction fund. Again, you don't have control over that for construction. The next page shows the differences between the two balance sheets. Majority of that is your capital assets net depreciation of $60 million. Bonds payable of $43 million. And the two things I call the evil twins, net pension liability and net other post-employment liability, $8,897,000 for your pension liability and $9,67,000 for your other post-employment benefits liability. Those are in your financial statements, but those are not items that you all are paying on. That's just something that has to be reported in here so bonding companies know what your potential liability is, your pension, and OPIF funds at the state level are to collapse. And if they were to collapse, don't worry about turning off the lights. A factory company will do it for you when you don't pay the bill. Page number 15, that is your statement of revenue, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your governmental funds. Total normal revenues, $44,37,000 for the year ended June 30, 2023. That's $3.6 million higher than it was in the previous year. Total expenditures, $45,315,000. That's 4.9 million higher than it was previous year. 2.6 million of that increase is due to your construction. Overall, you had a net change in fund balances of $10,908,000. Again, 9.5 million of that was from construction fund. General fund had an overall increase of $188,000, bringing the general fund to $7,393,000 at the end of June. Page 16, again, that's your reconciliation, shows the differences. You can look at that at your leisure. Again, the majority of that has to do with your capital outlays of $1,857,000. And your bond activity, $9,911,000. Seventeen is statement of net position for your proprietary funds. You only have one. That is your food service fund. Total assets and deferred outflows, $2,567,000. That's a $275,000 increase. Total liabilities, deferred inflows, $3,746,000. That's a $128,000 increase. And your net position is a negative $1,179,000, but it's a $147,000 improvement over last year. The reason you have a negative here is not because of your operations. Again, if you look in the middle, you have net other post-employment benefits liability and your pension liability. Again, numbers provided by the state for us putting into your financial statements. Those two combined are $3 million. So if you took the $3 million off of the $1,179,000, then you've got about a $2 million positive from what you contribute. So that negative is not from your actions, but from the powers that be.
We've been reporting the pension liability now for a number of years.
I want to say it was 2016. It may have been 18, but I think it was 16.
Been a while, yeah.
I got to think back my peer reviews. Every time one of these big ones come along this year, I can peer review.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
I'm on a good rotation.
Even the auditor gets audited, so.
Absolutely, every three years.
Yeah.
Page number 18, statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. This is based on your profit and loss for your food service. Overall, you had a profit of $146,503. That's down $238,000 from the previous year. The reason that is down is because your operating expenses went up by $458,000. Of that, $301,000 is materials and supplies. Food costs went up with the inflation. You all are what's called a 100% free district, meaning that all students eat for free and the federal government reimburses you. They set the reimbursement rate at the beginning of the year, so you continue to get reimbursed at the same rate, whereas your food costs kept driving up and driving up. So I would expect that to be turning around next year. Page number 19 is your statement of cash flows. Shows where your money came from, where your money went. Overall, you had a decrease in cash, I'm sorry, an increase in cash of $198,999 this year, leaving the food service with an ending balance of $927,000 in cash. It's a disappointing thing. I'm willing to go over every page, but I'm going to jump back into the notes and just hit a few of those. If you go to page number 32, at the top half of this, these are your bonds. What the total amount outstanding in bonds is $43,85,000 at the end of the year. Interest to pay those off, $15,920,000. Participation, that is what the state's SFCC is paying on these bonds on your behalf. Your district portion to pay these bonds out, including interest and principal, will be $57,738,000. At the bottom, that shows all of your long-term liabilities. Total long-term liabilities at the beginning of the year was $51,321,000. That increased by $15,628,000. $12,240,000 was for bonds. Reductions, $2,218,000. Your ending balance on long-term liabilities for the district was $64,731,000. And the portion that will be due this current year that you're in, $2,418,000. Page number 36. At the bottom, again, this just kind of shows what kind of numbers we have on the net pension liabilities out there that I've touched base on. Your portion is the CERS. That's County Employee Retirement System. That's on your classified people. Your portion of the underfunded pension for those folks, $11,287,000. The teacher retirement system is 100% state liability. And for your district alone, the state owes $62,171,000 to bring that up to be fully funded. That's why I call them the evil twins. Page 42, this is the other side of the coin. This is your other post-employment benefits, mainly health insurance. Your portion of the liability for teacher retirement system is $6.6 million. The state's portion is 2.1 million, almost 2.2 million. So for just the teachers, this district, for the underfunded health insurance benefits, $8.8 million. If you go to page number 52, at the top, there's no P. It says on behalf payments. I'm going to try to kind of figure this out. This is what the state, Department of Education, paid in expenses for this district. So teacher retirement system is a big one. They paid $5,672,000 in for that. And your health insurance, they pay health insurance for this district of $4,183,000. And in total, for this district, the state paid $10,89,000 of expenses. If you will turn to page number 76, it's a two-pager. Now, I'll tell a funny story about this one. Administrative people in my office, yeah, it looks like that. One more. There you go. Administrative people in my office weren't there to bind all these reports. I had nine districts, so I spent Thursday, Friday, Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, Friday, binding up 98 reports. Never done it before, but I was proud of myself. I was done. So Saturday morning, I went in because I had to do one more little round. And I got to the last one, and I realized that every one of these was put in upside down.
Oh, gee.
So instead of getting out of the office at nine o'clock in the morning, I got out at nine o'clock at night.
You said 98? 98 of them?
Yep. Because I had to open and crack every one of them, flip this page over. So I'm glad y'all was right because I was sitting here going, then I forget to get one right. But this is, and that's the only mistake I made all year, so I'm proud of that.
And the year's almost up.
And it's almost up.
That made Mr. Murray chuckle.
Yeah.
This is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This shows you how much federal funding you expended this year at this district. And it's by program. You have Title I, you have ADEA, you have the ESAR funds, and you have food service. Total federal awards expended by this district for the year ended June 30 of 2023 was $9,694,000. The majority of that was spent in the COVID ESAR. For $3,929,000. If you will go to page number 78, just let you know, you have federal funds above $750,000. You get what's called a single audit. That's where we have to audit federal awards to ensure you are in compliance with the spending of that money and following all the rules. Because of that, we have what's called a schedule of findings and question costs. We did not find any weaknesses in your controls over your federal awards or financial statements. We did not find any question costs where you misspent any money. So this is a summary that the state and federal government will look at to see if you're in compliance with your federal awards. Now, you all expended money out of your ESAR funds for construction, okay? I want to give kudos to you guys here because there's a little thing called the Davis Bacon Act, okay? It says if you spend money on construction, renovation, or major repairs where the cost of the labor is $2,000 or more, Davis Bacon Act kicks in. Davis Bacon Act says what you have to do as far as paying, what level you have to pay, you have to pay the employees, construction companies pay the employees, the prevailing wage in the area. They have to pay them every week. They have to report to you guys and show you all that they're doing that. When I saw you all spent the money on. When I saw you all spent the money on construction, I went, oh, no. Because I just had that in our district, but I asked them about Davis Bacon, and they said, who are they?
That was not our response.
I hope not.
Not the response here. But when I saw that, I went, oh, my God. Because it's not normal for a district to deal with that in your federal awards. But kudos to your guys, nailed it.
I know Mar, Mar don't look good in orange, the reason she doesn't do it.
She didn't hear what you said, Brendan.
I said you didn't look good in orange is the reason you done this.
Pages eighty and eighty-two, that is the Independent Audit Report on Internal Control over Financial Reporting. Again, we have an unmodified opinion, meaning that it's clean opinion, we did not find any problems with your controls over financial reporting. Eighty-two through eighty-five, I believe, and then eighty-four. That's the Independent Audit Report on Compliance Over Your Major Programs, what I just talked about. Again, we have a non-modified and unmodified opinion, meaning a clean opinion. We're letting the past entities in the federal government know that we did not find any problems with compliance with the federal awards. Pages number eighty-five and eighty-six, this management area comments, these are just minor things that we noted during the audit that need to be perhaps tightened up or things that didn't quite get processed properly. That's been addressed by management, they're aware of it, and we hopefully will clear these out next year. Pages number eighty-seven through, my fingers are going over pages, eighty-nine. Auditing standards require we, the auditors, to communicate with you, those charged with governance about how the audit went. Do we have any problems getting the audit scheduled? Do we have any problems getting the information we requested? Did we have arguments with management over accounting issues or auditing issues? We did not, and this is letting you all know that the audit was smooth and we did not have any problems with your people. Questions, comments, complaints, I listen to anything other than contributions.
I've mentioned this before, Mr. Gregory, but we do appreciate your availability throughout the school year, ask questions. And I know you'd rather us ask questions and do it right than have to clean it up later.
I'm only saying, if I can make my life easier, I don't know.
Yeah, so I, we appreciate that, yeah.
Questions? I'm gonna eat, I have to light my, so we can talk about this stuff all night long.
All right, we can.
So I recommend approval of fiscal year twenty-three district audit and submission to the Kentucky Department of Education.
Need a motion?
I make a motion to that effect.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is revised BG one, BG three for renovation project at Old Area Technology Center.
Okay, these revised BG one and BG three are simply post-bid revisions to reflect the price where we had met back in special session to accept the bids. So unless you have some kind of questions, it's literally just amending the previously approved BG one to reflect those post-bid amounts. You have the BG one attached and the BG three. I recommend approval of the BG one and BG three for the Old Area Technology Center. Did you have anything, Mr. Smith? Routine after the bids.
Second. I'll second you. Hello?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Do they have a name yet?
No, but they're ready to present to you.
Can I?
No.
Next item is Russell County Schools' Old Area Technology Center Building Renovations Resolution authorizing the Russell County School District Finance Corporation to issue revenue bonds.
So prior to this meeting, as you all are aware, the Russell County School District Finance Corporation met to, to very similar procedure in the issuance of bonds. And the Russell County School, Russell County Board of Education must adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds for the Russell County Schools' Old Area Technology Center building renovations. The resolution is as follows, so just bear with me. Resolution of the Board of Education of Russell County, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the execution of a lease of agreement with the Russell County School District Finance Corporation, and any further necessary instruments approving certain architects' plans for the construction of a certain school building project, authorizing and approving the execution of a supplement to the continuing disclosure procedures and the execution of tax compliance procedures, and approving the plan of financing the cost of said proj- said project. So I know we talked about this a little bit during the finance corporation. Mr. Lincoln, did I have anything to add?
So this, this was just yourselves authorizing yourselves as the finance corporation to have done what you've already done.
So, it's literally.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
How it works.
So I recommend that Russell County Board of Education adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds as presented and read.
I'll make a motion to that.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Russell County Athletic Project Additional Undercut Unsuitable Soils at Baseball Field.
Mr. Jonathan Smith from Branscombe is here with us, and I have the description here, but he's going to describe, similar to an area that we had out there for the track and the, and the football field that we had to remediate. Well, it's been several months ago now, but Mr. Smith can give you details here on this project.
After the progress meeting last, last week, the engineer of record was here and also the special inspector, and we've identified three areas on the baseball field that is soft. It's unsuitable for field. Of course, turf guy wants it fixed before he's going to put his turf down and warranty his turf. So one of the areas is right behind second base, that's one of the areas, if you all have been out there, you know, it was always wet behind second base. Actually, we found out when we dug it up, there's a water line there that was there years and years ago. So there's an area in right field that was soft, and also an area in left field. So recommendation from the engineers after we did the proof roll was, we're going to undercut twelve inches of the dirt, go back with G L, textile fabric, and then go down with DGA and bring it back up to grade. That'll basically, the fabric lets us bridge over the bad spot. We're going to dig out twelve inches of it, we'll bridge over, come back to rock, and that'll satisfy the engineering, and they go and lay their turf on the top of that. But we don't know exact areas because we've got to dig it out. They just identified approximate areas where we proof rolled it. So that's why it's not a final number. We have unit prices from piles excavating that the engineers looked at, everybody signed off on, so.
Unit prices that we've been using for the project, so it's not like.
Same unit prices we actually used for the other undercut area.
So they're not pulling up magic numbers or something, yeah.
It's that same unit price that we did before. So that's what I told Mr. Ford, we kind of estimated the areas. We think it's probably, should be less than forty thousand, if that's the maximum that we think it's going to be for the areas to undercut that, put the fabric down, bring the stone in, get back. And all this material has to be hot off-site, opposite, because we're going to put unsuitable soils. It's unsuitable, so we want to get rid of it. We want to put it somewhere else, we're going to worry about that later.
And it will roll. I mean, we stood out there and watched it.
You could walk across it with your foot and it would pump. I mean, it's, it's, it was pretty soft.
Mr. Kazook?
It's got moisture.
Just won't dry out.
Just moisture, yeah. Right behind second base, I mean, when I was in high school, it was wet, and that's been a day or two ago. Even when Eric was in high school, that's even longer.
Was that monster coming from?
It's just a wet spot. This actually.
Sort of like a wet spring somewhere near that.
This used to have a water line under it, and these areas, of course, the football field used to be sprinkled.
Right.
And there's, I don't know how many times the water lines have been broken and sprinkled around there, and it run all night. They figured it out the next morning, we have a wet spot on the football field. So over time, that moisture's just been contained there, it's nowhere for it to go.
It's built up and settled there.
Yep. So now we got to get rid of it, deal with it.
Yeah.
That's why it's called Russell Springs.
That's right.
But you said you dealt with it in Lincoln County.
Well, maybe digging the footers for Lincoln County Air Technology Center, we hit a spot like that, we had to dig it out.
It's just like there, we hit over the hill from the track, it was all wet, and we had to dig all that out and bring in rock and put the fabric down, so.
But it's ti- it's time sensitive, because the Moats Group will not move forward with this baseball project on the turf until this is remediated.
And actually, of course, you're giving rain next few days, holidays coming up, we're not going to open it up till Monday, but I talked to Danny Piles, and he's ready to start on it. Once I call him, Mar, and if it's approved, he'll be ready to go on Monday, and then start digging it out, getting fabric down, getting rock on. That will free them up to let them move forward.
Unless we fixed it the right way, they, they may go ahead and put down.
The engineer was not going to sign off on it. They were going to put it back on your all's back and let you all say, if we didn't fix it the right way, then there's no guarantees it'll work later, and they'll come back to us, man, and the engineer, that you got a problem. So this is the right way to fix it.
Yeah, this is doing it right to begin with. And, and again, this is not, it's, we still have the money in the contingency fund. That's why, that's why you have to have a contingency fund for unknown things like that, so it can all be covered. It's just that I want you all to understand that there's not the, like Mr. Smith said, the official, official paperwork. That's why we have not to exceed cost of forty thousand dollars, because it is a time, time sensitive, and we do have the unit prices from, from piles.
And the testing engineer will be there the whole time they're doing it, and he will verify all the yardage that comes out and what goes back in. It'll be on a report, so there's no, it'll be exactly what's, what comes out, what goes back in.
Independent of the people doing it.
Correct.
You know, with the testing.
And they work for you all direct, so they don't work for anybody else, that's the testing engineer.
Solid ground, and they've been very responsive, having to come out there with issues and things like that. So if, if you want to, I think you're going to just verbally, after we approve this, just talk a little bit real quick on the update. So I recommend approval of additional work at the current baseball field to address the unsuitable field material, not to exceed forty thousand dollars, and then we'll come back with the official paperwork.
I'll make a motion to that. I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook? Mr. Smith was just going to give another update to the.
This month, I know y'all had a lot of the tender, but work's been going real well. I mean, we still had a lot of good weather. All the original concrete is pretty much poured, except for the change door concrete that y'all bring in at the last meeting, which they got some sod to lay. They're putting the drains in the baseball field. Barring any weather, he said around Christmas time, he hopes to have the turf on the baseball field done. So by the first of the year, baseball field fence is going in, curb around the back end is going in. If you've been out there, see a lot of the fence, probably some of the ground that was put in. A lot of bleachers are going in, of course, the old bleachers are gone, they're tore down. So still had a lot of work going on, concession stand, the trusses are set, it's, it's dried in. Should be ready to start roof on in the next thirty days. So still a lot of, a lot of work going on. One thing we did decide in the last progress meeting, we're actually not going to lay paving this fall, we're waiting for spring because of the other work that's potentially going to happen around the bus garage and stuff. Not going there and tearing up much paving that you laid a few months ago. So that will be a stone parking lot until we, until they open back up in spring, and when spring opens back up. If we have to adjust grades, we can do that then. It's not going to affect any paving, it's not going to cost you all any money.
And it's a, I mean, it's a, it's not a weeks-long project. Drew said two or three days, they could have that paving done, and we would work that around coach director open schedules and things like that, you know. So I think we'll have a better pro- and also with equipment that we may still need to get in there, it would preserve the blacktop for this winter anyway, so it's work. So we were fine with that, had that discussion. Well, it has, it's, it's amazing, anytime you go out there, you can just see the progress, so it's, it's been great. And just a really good group of, of contractors again to work with, it's just, it's a really good project.
I think bleachers are so high.
Great elevation. Great elevation.
I like the standing right up.
Oh, the standing room, the bleachers are nice, in front of those little tables, yes. That will be a very popular area. Someone said we could sell those spots, just like you can the seats. Yeah. Anything else for Mr. Smith, updates?
It's going to look amazing.
It is going to look amazing.
Next item on the agenda is authorize the local planning committee, LPC, to conduct a finding regarding bus garage and football field house.
Okay, so our current district facility plan, that's board-approved and that the Kentucky Department of Education approved, it does note the bus garage on there, but it notes for a bus garage, the existing bus garage, to be remodeled and added to. If anybody has been out there and thought much about where that bus garage sits, it's kind of absolutely in the way of our whole project right now. And in, in district facility plans in the past, we had actually, it'd been conversations of, of moving the bus garage away from this campus to possibly some land that we own there at Russell Springs Elementary School. So all this, and then right now, you all know, we don't currently have a football field house in, in part of this plan, and it's not listed specifically on the district facility plan. So to kind of clean that up, at this time, what this finding would, would entail, and we've had a conference call with the, our construction consultant with the Kentucky Department of Education, is with your, the board's authorization, the existing LPC or the local planning committee would conduct the finding. And what that means is literally, led by the architect, a conversation regarding the need for the bus garage to be a new bus garage, a- a- and if they want to go that way and vote that way, and then to add a, a field house, a football field house, and talk about what that looks. At that point, if the LPC approves that, it still has to come back to you all, and then it still has to go to KDE. Now, at that point, it's just listed on the district facility plan as being on the priorities. It's, it's on there with the green light if, if you all decide. That doesn't mean at that point that, that means tonight's vote, if you all vote in favor of this finding, that doesn't mean that you're voting in favor of building a new bus garage or a new field house. This is the first step in those process of conducting the, what's called, what's called a finding. And actually, because it's a finding, we have to advertise them in the newspaper, give the notice to the public, have it open to, for public comment, and we would, we would adjourn one meeting, we would adjourn the finding about the bus garage. Have that meeting, adjourn it, and then we would convene a meeting about the field house or vice versa. But because they're findings, they have to be done separately. They can be done back to back, but they have to be done separately. So otherwise, it's an amendment, which is a longer process. So there's just a lot of stuff to that. With your all's authorization, I think we could, and, and our rep at KDE said the same thing, we could get this wrapped up in KDE's approval within, within a month's timeframe. Again, at this point, this would just be authorization for the LPC to have that conversation, for you all to potentially consider having that on the district facility plan, to, to move forward with that. So a lot has changed, you know, we've done a lot more than we thought we would be able to when that district facility plan was, was initially developed, and that bus garage inhibits a lot. I know that's a conversation for a future meeting, but it, it inhibits a lot where it's at, and having a field house would go ahead and complete a project that we've started, in, in, in my opinion. But again, this is just the first step for that. There's been a lot of conversations of folks, a lot of community folks have asked, you know, what are you going to do with that bus garage sitting there?
It is a little bit ugly sitting there.
It's like a sore thumb.
Like a sore thumb.
And we could never build onto the existing bus garage to what we needed to be.
It'd still be ugly.
Where it sits. Yeah.
But it'd still be in the way.
Yeah, it'd be ugly and in the way.
But if that were relocated and brought up to, to the standards of how you do bus garages now, we would, my recommendation would be on the land up there at Russell Springs Elementary School, and we can, we can have that, that's for a future meeting. But there's room up there and some other access points as well.
Plus, that would help congestion out here.
It would help the congestion. Of course, they'd still come here to line up, but the whole idea of finding their way back there and stuff like that, it would help.
It'd be a lot easier access.
We'd just have to map all that out of how it would, how it would work out. The dismissal times and all that would come into play. So any questions about the process of the finding or anything? It's, 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 and I attach that, you all have that, that whole process, but it's, it's procedural in, in regulation of how that process works. Our district facility plan, it's still a few more years until the whole four-year plan is, is, is due. So this is what, this is exactly why the regs have a finding, it's for things that come up in the meantime, for the boards to consider, so.
I'll make that motion.
So the Russell County Board of Education authorized the local. So, the Russell County Board of Education authorized the local planning committee to convene for the purpose of finding, of a finding regarding construction of a new bus garage and a football field house.
I'll take that.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
So, you all will see that, will, Mr. Ackerman was the, the existing LPC comes into play, so Mr. Ackerman was chair with that, and I'll get with him and schedule those meetings.
Next item is declare surplus and accept sealed bids.
So, per the Russell County Board of Education Policy 04.8, the superintendent shall advise the board when certain properties are no longer needed for public school purposes. Upon receiving this report, the board may at such time as it needs proper and after compliance with applicable state or federal regulations authorize the disposal of school properties through closed sealed bids, public auction, or sale for at least a fair market value established by certified appraisal. The board reserves the right to reject any and all bids, and the complete policy is attached. The following items are no longer needed and/or unusable and are recommended for surplus listing with the description and pictures attached. We have a 1998 Chevy Blazer four-door and a 1997 Ford F-250 three-quarter ton pickup trucks. You all have the descriptions and pictures of both of those items here, so we just recommend that the board declare them as surplus property and authorize myself or the designated to advertise for sealed bids with the option to reject any and all bids, to which we would bring back to you all for approval and acceptance of the bids.
These trucks are all to pieces.
Mr. Murray could take them, make them look like a shiny new nickel?
I've quit.
You've quit?
We have to do something. They're horrible.
Okay, I thought you quit.
I just ain't going to fix them.
We need a motion. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is student worker, maintenance department.
Okay, the Russell County Schools can continue to be an active partner with the Apprenticeship Building America Grant Program under the direction of Mr. Sloan, which is our career support specialist for Russell County Schools. Specifically, we're seeking permission to create a student worker position for the maintenance department within Russell County Schools. At some point, I would really like to have the conversation with you all. We need our, you know, just think about our facilities, we've been adding facilities, and our maintenance staff has stayed the same, and we really need some additional, at least one. And this might be something that spurs that. The student is enrolled in classes at Russell County High School and can work part-time with the maintenance department, same thing as what we're doing with IT and what we're doing with the two young ladies that are in the education career pathway. Wonderful experience for a student worker while simultaneously helping the district's maintenance department. Of course, you all have previously approved $10 per hour for the student workers, so I recommend approval of the student worker for the Russell County Schools Maintenance Department, not to exceed 30 hours per week paid at the student work rate of pay.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
And I just want to say, I really appreciate you all doing this because it's great when Mr. Sloan is out talking to employers and we're participating in the same program that we're asking employers to participate in. And it's, I heard you say, help a kid too at the same time, so it's a win-win. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is amendment to interim assistant principal contract.
Ms. Howard, that's filling in for Ms. Jamie.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the interim assistant principal contract for Mrs. Howard, previously approved by you all, but did not include participating in the Kentucky Employees Health Plan, the amended contract will allow for that, and this doesn't incur a cost to Russell County Schools, but it does make it active where she would go from retired insurance back to active insurance. So, I recommend approval of the amended contract as presented, and then once she's done for the year, that would revert back, yeah, yeah. But that was not included in the original.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Well, I can't, we're going to do this now, and I ain't even keep it up.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is grant of easement for artworks.
This is a similar easement to what we all approved for the sewer line going back to artworks at the creek, except this time, they are asking for a road. So, they've requested an easement to allow for a road to be built through property owned by the Russell County Board of Education, specifically there to the side of Jamestown, back behind the board, going back there to where their office or their space is back there at what's called the Artworks at the Creek. It will run along the path denoted on the attached concept plan that they provided that I attached to your board book. At this point, this initial permission from the Board of Education is being sought, and a formal deed of easement will be presented at a later date. Mr. Hoover will work on that and do that if you all approve this for tonight. The road will begin by the Children's Advocacy Center and then continue back there behind, like I said, behind Jamestown, behind the board office. It will be gated, only open during times of events at the artworks at the creek. Vehicles would enter by that road, and then they would exit through the Town Branch Road or Dunbar Road, and so, right now, it cannot take two-way traffic, the road is so narrow back there if there were events going on. So, they would exit, they would enter there below the Jamestown Elementary School, below the board office there by the Advocacy Center, come through there, circle back around, and then exit there off the Town Branch, it cuts off into Dunbar Road there. All costs would be incurred by artworks at the creek. So, there in your package, you have their drawing that they've attached, their need for the access road, what they're currently doing and advantages to it, and then as you can see, they have plans to build an amphitheater back there. Artworks is a great community partner for Russell County Schools. I don't see this being an impact negatively to our district because it's out in the wooded area, it's not area that we use or anything like that, and they stay true to their word for the sewer easement, no issues whatsoever with that, and I know it would be the same for this, for this road. So, I recommend the Russell County Board of Education grant an easement to artwork for the purpose of building a road. Again, once you all approve this tentatively tonight, then Mr. Hoover would present the formal easement for your all's approval at a future board meeting.
You haven't been back there, you need to.
It's pretty awesome, isn't it?
It is.
It's pretty awesome. Mr. and Mrs. Adams, John and Cheryl, they do, they do great, great work in the community.
I didn't know that was back there.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Second.
Which one?
Me, Brandon. I want to do something.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Yes. He's on this.
Next item on the agenda is school year 2024, 2025, district calendar committee.
Okay, you all see this, this process every single year, we just need to change the representatives. Again, I think I probably note this every year, but Ms. Dahmer can attest to this, but we had a calendar committee before the law ever said we had to have a calendar committee, so I appreciate that, and always appreciate Mrs. Dahmer and her leadership with this. By statute, we have to have one school district principal and recommended Mr. Kevin Reynolds, one school district's office administrator other than the superintendent, Mrs. Dahmer and Director of Student Support Services, one member of the local board of education, appreciate Mr. Selby willing to serve, two parents attending students at a school in the district, Brianna Hadley and Baxter Brown, one school district elementary school teacher, Mr. Vince Stevens agreed to serve, one school district middle or high school teacher, Ms. Rhonda Kimbler has agreed to serve, appreciate that. She also represents Russell County Education Association, so kind of a dual role there. Two school district classified employees, Liz April and Jennifer Loy, and two community members from the local Chamber of Commerce or Business Community or Tourism Commission, Lindsay Goster, Russell County Chamber of Commerce President, and Daniel Wilson, Russell County Tourism Director, both agreed to serve. So, again, this process, we would meet, the board has to, then we would bring to you all a tentative calendar. That first meeting is just for public review, and then you all would subsequently vote for that at another meeting. So, I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education appoint the school year 24, 25, local school district calendar committee as noted to review, develop, and recommend school calendar options for school year 24, 25, and pending approval tonight, Mrs. Dahmer has already got us a tentative date to start working on that. And people are wanting to know, aren't they, Mrs. Dahmer, when fall and spring break are? So, it's important dates for our school districts, so.
I'll make that motion.
That was her motion.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And again, because that's authorized by the board, we will have that meeting noticed in media, et cetera.
Next item on the agenda is students shorten the school day and/or week.
Okay, again, something very familiar to you all, local boards of education must approve requests for students to have a shortened school day or end or week. The decision is determined by the needs of the student, the documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. So, I recommend a shortened school day or week for the following student IDs 24-05, and that the necessary documentation is forwarded to the Kentucky Department of Education. And again, this is for students that are in special education, their team determines that this is a need, and once we submit to Kentucky Department of Education after your approval, it is retroactive back to that date that the Child's Committee recommended it.
Make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
She's doing both. It's a different season.
Next item on the agenda is out of state and/or overnight trips.
Russell County Middle School Y Club, November 16th to 18th to Louisville, Kentucky for the Kentucky YMCA Youth Assembly, February 22nd to the 24th to Nashville, Tennessee for Parthenon replica Gecko Greek Restaurant and the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church. The varsity girls' basketball, traveling to Gatlinburg December 19th to 22nd, and Russell County High School, March 30th through April 6th, 2024, to Destin, Florida for a softball tournament. So, I recommend approval of the out-of-state and/or overnight trips as presented.
I made the motion.
Second.
Second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.